That medical issue. You wouldn't go to a legal assistant on a legal matter. You would go to the lawyer who specializes in that legal issue. Um, I say that for one reason. There are a lot of opinions that are being thrown around. There's a lot of criticism. There's a lot of accusations. And they're coming from folks who are nervous. They're worried. But it's because they don't really understand local government finance. And so I wanted to just caution those opinions and accusations come with a responsible and realistic solution. Putting together the budget that's balanced is not an easy task. In fact, it's a very arduous task. Unlike my own finances, when I cut my budget to match what I bring in in income, it only affects me and my family. But when a local bud, local government cuts their budget, it affects everyone in the jurisdiction, not just one family. No one likes taxes. I personally dislike taxes. But unfortunately, they're a necessary component of providing services, especially at the local level. Especially at the local level. That's where we see tangible use of those resources for the services that we receive. That disappears at the state and federal level, but it doesn't disappear at the local level. The reality is local governments are pressed more and more for better quality of services, but they don't have the luxury of private business to just pass that cost on to the consumer. Their only place to get those revenues is through taxes, grants, charges for services, and intergovernmental agreements and partnerships. So I just wanted to say, unlike many public comments, I want to thank the commissioners. And because this process over the budget has been more transparent and has encouraged more public participation than all of the thirty years in county that I've had since then. So, thank you. Thank you for making it more transparent. Thank you for allowing public comments to actually be heard, and you take them to heart. I want to thank the staff, especially Christie. I know what it goes to put the budget together. The hard, the long hours, sorry, I'm going over. In fact, um, so that, that just hasn't happened. So I just want to close by saying that I support the county commissioners and the staff as they move forward. I'm thankful you have a fund balance that can support some of the deficit or the, the, may not be able to protect at all. But I support even the use of not having a full rollback. The county has to bring forward a balanced budget. That's by law. And the cut services is not something we have to move forward. We, as a county, have to move forward. We can't stay where we've been.
Thank you, Ms. Todd.
Thank you.
Before you call the next person, Ms. Minty, I just want to go ahead and clarify now that, uh, county manager just, just informed me that the stream wasn't working until about two minutes into her speech. So if you go online to see this, you're probably going to miss the first probably, uh, it looks like about fifteen minutes of the meeting. Okay. All right. I apologize for that.
Catherine Tootle.
Hey, my name's Catherine Tootle, and I'm a woman in long-term recovery. And what that means, it's been about nine years since I've had to use any alcohol or illegal substances to change the way I do with my life. I live at five fourteen Dunahou Street here in Bullock County, and I'm the Director of Freedom Through Recovery, which is at two twenty-six South Zeta Row, which is here in Bullock County, too. And I'm here today to speak about the opioid abatement funds that the county received. Um, I had a very successful meeting with Mr. Peyton Fuller back there, and we, I gave him a one pager of like some, some ideal things that we could work on as a county to really help all of our citizens who have already been impacted by opioid use disorder. Um, because what we want to do is see them be successful citizens that pay their taxes and vote. That's, that's the gift of recovery. Um, what we do on a daily basis, we already work within county agencies with our jail because we believe that people who, who have had drug charges can go to treatment and get well. That has been, that has been my experience, and I know there are other people that are sitting in the jail right now that it helps, and we've already helped them. And we also work within, um, the Department of Family Children Services to help families be restored. I am a, I am a beneficiary of a DFAX case, and that is what helped bring me into recovery, and I advocate very hardly for DFAX. So that's really all I want to say. I just want to let y'all know that we had a really good meeting, and I would love to have some more talk around it and go over any ideas that we can. Thank you.
Dwayne Collins.
Good morning. I'm Dwayne Collins. Uh, um, I grew up here in Bullock County. I'm a lone life resident. I served in the United States Air Force for six years, came back, taught school for over thirty years. Um, and I appreciate all your hard work that y'all put forth. I really do that. Uh, I know how it feels to work under a budget. I'm a homeowner. Um, I've owned several homes over the years. I continue to, um, emphasize that we must work within a budget, and if our budget doesn't work, we have to start looking at places where we can cut to see where we can come, um, come to a, um, an agreement within our own. Over the years, the last few years, my homeowners insurance, I mean, homeowner property insurance has gone, gone up. Property taxes, homeowner's insurance. My automobile insurance. Every time you turn around, there's a new tax being occurred, you know, occurring. Um, I retired two years ago. Um, thought I was finally there, and every time I turn around, my budget, I have to live within my budget. And I feel that everyone else should be living within a budget. I can understand the growth in Bullock County. I, I grew up here when there was only one signal light in Statesboro. It's been a long time. And now I look back over my years and see how much Georgia Southern has brought to the county and the growth that we've occurred here. The road system, we just got a T-SLOSS. I think T-SLOSS is great, but at some point, overtaxation has to cease. Just like the Tea, Tea Party occurred. But overtaxation has to cease. Uh, I appreciate every one of your hard work that y'all put into, um, making our county run, and I can understand that. Um, I was, I served in the classroom over thirty years, and it was a lot of hard work. Right? I felt like I raised a lot of young men and women, uh, to be, be our future taxpayers. But please, uh, when you start looking at this, think about the retirees and those that are in need. So, uh, like I said before, I appreciate all your hard work, but also think about the budgets, and do you have to live within a budget? Can you increase your salary when you need more money? So I'd like to end with, I appreciate all y'all's hard work, and I, I would not want to be in your position right now, but at least think about those that are retired and are living on a re- annual budget, monthly budget. All right? Thank you.
Keith Hamilton.
I'm Keith Hamilton, one, 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 Arcola Road, three, zero, four, one, five. I want to take a minute just to make you all aware with the rain event we had last Sunday and Monday, the eleventh and twelfth. In regards to our septic issue and the septic discussions going onward, uh, the pumpers in Bullock County are not operational. Um, portal's been closed for a while for a number of issues. Meter is shut down. I received an email at four thirty this morning that due to the excessive rainwater and whatnot, meter's pumping stations are out of service, and the main primary one where we dump is actually, both pumps have to be replaced. So the email simply stated they are closed until further notice. Um, I've got twenty-five folks right now that need us to do something for them, and we can't. So I just simply want to make you aware that this is not a hypothetical. We've been, been down this road before, and I'm just calling your attention to the fact that that's exactly where we are right now. I did pump two tanks for some folks here that were, one, that's terminally ill, under hospice care at home. And I also did for a lady that's, as her husband said, very pregnant and due this week. I took those somewhere out of the county again to dispose of, and the disposal fees were over three times what we customarily pay. So it's just simply the economics again. Um, either we're going to have to raise our pumping rates if we've got to continue to haul out of the county, or we will be able to resolve that and have some control over it and spare those extra costs. But I just wanted to make you aware of it. It's a real situation going on right now, and it's, um, it's resolution to it is indefinite at this point. Thank you.
That concludes our, uh, public comments. We'll move into our consent agenda. I'm going to read these items off, and then we can discuss them at the end as far as what we need to do with them. Uh, number one, approve the minutes from Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Two, approve the minutes from Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Three, approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of the road in Broadmore State Subdivision. Four, approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of roads in Grimble Point Subdivision. Five, approve payment to JCT Enterprise and Company LLC for mulch grinding services in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars. Six, approve a special event permit for O'Geechie Area Hospice to host a nonprofit event at O'Geechie Technical College, twenty Joe Kennedy Boulevard, Statesboro, Georgia, on June seventh, twenty twenty-five, from six thirty P M until ten thirty P M. Seven, approve entering into administrative services agreement with RX Benefits Incorporated. Eight, approve a resolution declaring unserviceable and authorizing internet sales or salvage of vehicles and equipment. Nine, approve a concessions agreement with Blue Mile Pizza LLC, DBA Tarantino's Grill for the total sum of sixty thousand dollars. Ten, approve task release number one from Hoff Stedler and Associates under the master agreement for engineering services previously executed on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to perform an analysis and prepare a feasibility report regarding various options for septic and sewage in Bullock County, and to approve a lump sum budget of eighteen thousand dollars as outlined in the task release number one exhibit attached referencing section five point one. Number eleven, approve task release number two from Hoff Stedler and Associates under the master agreement for engineering services, uh, previously executed on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to perform an overall cursory civil engineering plan review for proposed developments within Bullock County and to approve a not-to-exceed budget of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Twelve, approve an intergovernmental agreement, uh, buy in between the depart, Georgia Department of Corrections and Bullock County for the housing of inmates. Thirteen, approve an agreement for eye care services with RCS Vision LLC, eye care service for the Bullock County Correctional Institute incarcerated population. Fourteen, approve an agreement for dental services with Les J Kicklighter, DMD, PC, for the Bullock County Correctional Institute incarcerated population. We can approve these items collectively, or we can move any item to new business for further discussion. Do I have a motion? Do I have any discussion?
I'd like to move three, four, ten, and eleven, please.
Three, four, ten, and eleven. Okay. So with the exception of three, four, ten, and eleven, do we have an emotion to approve these?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Number five.
And number five. Is there any other discussion? Any other items that we would like to move to new business? Not hearing any discussion, I'm going to call for a motion on the consent agenda. Okay. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to old business. County Attorney Jeff Akins, approve a resolution, or excuse me, approve a resolution authorizing the staff and professionals to proceed with issuance of revenue bonds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not here, uh, at the last meeting when this was presented. Um, but it's, it was deferred, obviously, so it's coming back up at this meeting. And we provided updated resolutions for the twelve-year financing plan and the twenty-year financing plan to fund the jail addition project that were presented at the last meeting. We also provided a, um, cash funding analysis, and, and Mr. Gettner Hart, who was here this morning, uh, may discuss this some more, uh, and answer any questions you have about it. But, um, the cash funding analysis shows two different scenarios for funding the jail addition project without any debt. The first scenario assumes an annual construction inflation rate of two and a half percent, and the second scenario assumes an annual construction, uh, inflation rate of five percent. Both scenarios assume continuing annual SLOSS collections of eight, uh, eight million, excuse me, four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to go toward funding the project, which is the amount allocated to the project under the current SLOSS intergovernmental agreement. Under the first scenario, construction of the project would not begin for nine years, and the cost would be seventy-five million twenty, uh, seventy-five million twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Under the second scenario, construction of the project would not begin for fourteen years, and the total cost would be a hundred and sixteen million, one hundred and eighteen, uh, thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So you can see there's a substantial issue with both time and rising costs if you try to pay for it on a pay-go basis, uh, try to save up the money to pay for it. And the only, the only comment I would add to that before, uh, I turn it over to Mr. Gettner Hart would be that the jail project, as you know, was on the SLOSS referendum. And by law, you cannot abandon a project that was approved on a SLOSS referendum. You have to, you have to proceed with that project and complete it. Um, there is, there is one, and this was added to SLOSS law a few years ago. There is a provision now that if you determine a project to be infeasible, and I don't have that code section in front of me, but there's a process by which you, if you made that determination, you could call for another referendum to have the voters vote on that specific project or projects that you determined to be infeasible. And that's the only way that the project could be abandoned is if the voters voted then not to do the project. But under the present circumstances, um, I think you're, you're bound to find a way to complete the jail project, and I'm not sure there's any way to do it other than the financing. I also want to point out that these are revenue bonds, so they were not, they were not on the referendum. They were not general obligation bonds. But they were spelled out in the intergovernmental agreement. It's stated in the intergovernmental agreement, the county intended to issue sixty million dollars in revenue bonds. Now, it didn't mention an interest rate or a, you know, total principal and interest payments because we didn't know what that would be. But obviously, if you're, if you're borrowing sixty million dollars, you're going to pay back more than that. Um, and it was also referenced that, and in fact, it's in the intergovernmental agreement, that if the debt is not paid off by the end of this current SLOSS, then it would be included as a priority project in the next SLOSS. So, which, which can be done, as I understand it from our bond counsel, uh, if it's, if the transaction is structured correctly. Um, and, and like I say, all this was in the intergovernmental agreement. And when I presented that on November eighteenth, I went through all of that. So it was publicly disclosed, and very clearly, I went back and watched the meeting to make sure that I did discuss it, and I did. I mean, it was clear as a bell, frankly. So, um, it's not like this is something that's being sprung on the public without any prior knowledge. Um, and those are the points I wanted to make. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gettner Hart at this point for anything he would like to add.
No, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Doug with Davenport, great to be here again this morning. Happy answering questions. I think Mr. Akins did a, uh, great overview. Obviously, one of the things that we, you wanted to ask is the why-borrow question, and so that's what the cash funding analysis did. And obviously, there's a lot of assumptions that went into that, such as the compounding nature of inflation and that collections would continue at the same rate in perpetuity. But the point remains the same, that cash funding is an option, but it's going to take a while, um, for the county in order to accrue the appropriate funds to be able to pay the dollars in cash, um, which is certainly an option, avoid paying the interest on it, but you are paying higher, um, potentially higher, uh, construction costs, assuming these two different rates of compounding rates of inflation. I think overall, our, our recommendation and, and structure remains the same as the prior meeting that we do recommend going forward with the twenty-year financing option purely that it allows the county a lot of flexibility into the future with the ability to pay it off early in the event that there are surplus collections or there are negotiated additional funds in the next SLOSS iteration. So we continue to remain steadfast in that that's the recommended approach that we're doing to alleviate any potential concerns or pressures that might occur in the general fund in the future in the event that something unforeseen happens six years from now. So that's my big picture overview. Happy to answer any questions, but I think, um, that was a great summary, and, and we'd be willing to dig into any of the more details as needed.
And I think Mr. Murray, our bond counsel, has, has joined us by, via a team's link. Uh, hey, Roger. Do you have anything, uh, you want to add?
No, I'm just here to fill in any questions if anybody has a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Newkirk.
Um, can you explain again to the public, public at the end of the six years SLOSS, um, how we can roll that into having it on another vote to pay off the debt of this again? I think we were talking about before, it's because we're doing a, a, running it through the authority that it would pay off the debt for the building. Is that correctly how I'm wording it right? Or can one of y'all explain to that a little bit better?
Certainly. I, I can do my best. Uh, I can impersonate a, a lawyer and try to explain, and Roger can correct me if I've done anything incorrectly. But the way that we're going to structure this transaction is kind of an, it's called an installment sale agreement. And so SLOSS are limited to being able to pay capital, pay for capital projects, um, and not necessarily debt service. So the way that we're going to structure this transaction is that the Public Facilities Authority will own title to the, the jail, and the county will be acquiring the facility from the Public Facilities Authority in an amount that's equivalent to what the annual debt service payments would be. So within the next SLOSS, it'd be for the acquisition of the jail project from the Public Facilities Authority. So it's, we're, we're able to use future SLOSS to make debt service payments or pay the bond up early.
That, that's correct. I agree with what you said.
Okay. Appreciate it. Um, and I know y'all recommended twenty years. Um, is there an intention of possibly paying it off early? I know we keep talking about paying it off in ten years possibly. Is that?
That would be our intent.
Okay.
But this just allows the, if that doesn't happen, if negotiations with the cities don't allow, or if the SLOSS was to not pass a public referendum.
Okay.
Before we talk anymore about finance, if y'all would, just entertain me here for a minute. Um, I'm going to go off script here and, uh, put some people on the spot. If I could, I'd like to get our county manager and, uh, the warden from the Bullock County Correctional Institute to come up to the podium here. So over the last week or so, I've had a lot of folks that have asked a lot of questions and, and expressed frustration about the building of a new jail. And the first thing that I want to explain to folks is we're not building a new jail. We are expanding the jail that we have by adding an additional jail pod. Now, I've asked these two gentlemen to come up here because first, I'm going to get them to explain their backgrounds. Uh, Mr. Tillman, could you tell us what your background is in, in jailing and the prisons and things?
Uh, yes, sir. Randy Tillman, uh, interim county manager, uh, public safety director here in Bullock County and former warden, uh, Bullock County CI. Prior to that, I did thirty years with the Georgia Department of Corrections. Uh, started as a correctional officer in nineteen eighty-six, and, uh, by the grace of God, moved on up and retired out. Last three years, I was over, uh, daily operations of Georgia Department of Corrections. I would like to state I retired in twenty fourteen. Uh, it's not been in the, in the last few years, but, uh, oversaw around eighty-eight facilities, nine thousand staff, and a over eight hundred million dollar budget. Left that, went into private prison, Geo Group, uh, running U.S. Marshals facility in Lovejoy, which was about seven hundred, um, detainees, similar to what a jail would house.
Thank you. Warden Tool, could you explain or just give us a brief synopsis of your background as well, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, Robert Tool, I'm the current warden at, at the CI. I retired from state corrections in twenty twenty-three. I started in nineteen ninety-six as a correctional officer. Uh, worked my way up, uh, retired as the facility director, same position Mr. Tillman just described. Uh, I've held that position for the last five years of my career with state government.
So the reason I asked these two gentlemen to come up here is because I think that they would both qualify as experts as far as dealing with prisons, um, a, and jails. And the first thing I'm going to ask them is, could you explain the difference between a jail and a prison?
Prisons, uh, specifically here in Georgia is going to be, uh, post-conviction. Uh, and for the Georgia Department of Corrections prisons, whether it's private prison under contract, those are felonies, sentenced usually to more than one year, uh, up to life or, um, those inmates, as they're called at that point, go through a rigorous, uh, evaluation upon entry into the prison system. Their, uh, evaluations include mental health, medical, uh, you know, any physical limitations or liabilities that they may have. And then they're classified based upon their, uh, obviously male, female, uh, their crime, the length of time. It's a, a formula that's calculated, and it sends them to an appropriate prison. Uh, prisons are built to house specific securities, security levels. Uh, minimum being what we have at the correctional institution here that is contracted with the county, uh, up into, uh, high security, uh, which there are a couple of high-security prisons in the state. Um, and those prisons are built off of a budget that allows them to hold those inmates. Uh, you, you can't put a high-security prison or in a low-security-built facility. It, it doesn't work. They will, they will find a way to compromise the, the inner workings of that prison, and it's just not built for that. Uh, the jail here, uh, ran by Sheriff Brown, is, has to be built and ran to hold anything that you can imagine. Uh, the sheriff does not have the luxury of saying, no, we're, we're not going to house this alleged rapist, child molester, murderer. He, he has no choice. So therefore, those facilities have to be built to the standard to house the most extreme case. Uh, in that, uh, which a large portion of the sheriff's budget, if I remember correctly, is medical cost. Again, he is obligated, uh, by the constitution to provide healthcare at a level that is adequate for, for anyone. Doesn't matter if you're an inmate or not. I know there's people that disagree with that, but it's, it's the law. Um, and again, the sheriff can not, will not send a detainee, someone who is a detainee, someone who is alleged of, uh, committing a crime. He will not send that person home on bond or any other means if they are a threat to the community. So therefore, he has to house that detainee and pay for any medical costs that, that may be incurred on that. Anything else?
Covered it well.
So, if we have prisoners in our jail, can we put them out on work details?
You're speaking the sheriff's population?
The sheriff's population in the jail.
No, sir. It's my understanding that, uh, if you are pre-conviction, uh, you're being detained, uh, you can volunteer to work, but you cannot be made to work other than to take care of your immediate area, such as your cell and your personal hygiene.
And, and the big difference here, just to kind of summarize this so far, you have a prison where you have people that are actually convicted of a crime and found guilty, that are classified and put into a prison that is built to house a particular population based off their security risk. Where a jail is, anybody that shows up, they must be housed, secured, their safety and health must be maintained in there. And if we don't do those things, and if we don't maintain somebody's health and safety in a, in, in the jail, what happens?
You have some active lawsuits.
Not from here.
Yeah, so, uh, I think Mr. Tillman just answered the question, yeah, you, you wind up in a court.
Right. So when we start doing the business cost analysis on providing healthcare and safety upfront versus paying on the back end for a legal defense and lawsuits, I think it's all safe to say, and I'm going out on a limb here because I'm not an accountant, nor a lawyer, nor a, a prison guy, but it's safer to go ahead and provide that health and safety upfront than it would be to pay on the back end for the lawsuits and legal defense for this stuff, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and we, you know, we gotta laugh about the lawsuits, but I, as I stated, I've been retired since twenty fourteen from the state of Georgia. I still have, to my knowledge, two active lawsuits. Of course, I'm being represented by the state. Uh, those can go on for years. They're very costly. Uh, anything we do, uh, in corrections, law enforcement, and outside of law enforcement, you know, DINK's operation, the, the safety that goes into that, you try to prevent future occurrences as best you can. You're not always successful, but the more you try, the harder you try, the better your, your ratio is gonna be. So another point about the jail that the public may not know versus a prison, prison beds, X number of beds, beds in a facility. Most all of the facilities in the state are, they're either male or female. They're, they're not mixed in one facility. So if you have a thousand beds in a male facility, you can fill most every one of those beds. You still have to have a little bit of room to move some, separate some people. In a jail, you house male and female. If you have a cell block that house, ha, has twenty-five cells in it, twenty-five beds, and that's designated as your female, and you only have three females incarcerated, detained, then you've got twenty-two beds that are offline, that you can't use. So if he has five hundred beds and has four hundred to four hundred and fifty in those, he's, he is operationally at capacity. Uh, you have to separate, uh, possible, uh, rival gang members, which is a real and, and big issue. Uh, obviously, you have to keep the male and females separate for obvious reasons. And, uh, internal in the jail, you have another jail that you have to house the inmates that are the detainees that are a danger to other detainees. Uh, they're just mean people in this world. Uh, can't get around that.
So in short, basically, we have a jail that we have to be able to put somebody that makes a minor infraction, whether it's a Georgia Southern student that has a slight error in judgment on a Saturday night, to grandma that has issues with her tags and things, uh, and ends up in jail alongside people that are legitimate hardened criminals. Okay. Um, a, and can you tell me why jails are so expensive to build?
I can tell you that, like everything else that has gone up, from vehicles to toothpaste, that's one thing. Um, there are many, many, and I'm not an expert, I'm not an architect, but prisons have evolved along, just like bridges. Lawsuits. Lawsuits are heard. Jeff can expand on that if necessary. And out of those lawsuits usually comes a new set of standards, and your standards get built in, built in, built in. So, you know, myself nor the warden could go and build a prison because we don't have that knowledge to satisfy all of those rules and regulations. But everything has to be looked at from a, a hardened standpoint. Again, in, in this instance with the jail, uh, you have to build to the extreme. And not everybody builds jails. Not everybody builds prisons. Um, it, it's a specialized niche. Um, and, and those people are going to pass along the cost of, of equipment. Uh, the help, a, as Dink and Robert are experiencing, if you don't pay the operators enough to operate the equipment, you may have equipment, no operators. All of that is passed on. It, it, you know, it's not as simple as saying, we don't, we're not gonna fund that service. Uh, they're gonna pass that on to us, and, and the cost continues to increase. I'm sure there's lots of other factors in that also.
So, and I just have one other question for you, well, actually, two questions, Mr. Tillman. Um, what's our current capacity in our jail that we have right now?
Don't pin me down exactly, but it's, uh, close to five hundred beds.
Okay. And, and we operated about what occupancy on average?
You mentioned some factors, uh, and, and nothing against our great, uh, college, university here and, and the students that come, but we all know they come and they have a good time sometimes. And, uh, uh, so that population on a college weekend can fluctuate thirty to forty, uh, that have to spend the night, and, and then they go home if everything's okay. Uh, but he's staying between four twenty, uh, the, the last number is, warden, you may have better, you feed them.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Around four twenty, I would say, on average.
Okay. Um, and then I, I just wanna give Warden Tool an opportunity to talk about what, what does most of your population a, at the Correctional Institute do during the day here in the county?
Okay, so we, we have a population of a hundred and sixty, uh, inmates at the CI. Uh, roughly a hundred to a hundred and twenty go out in the community and work every day, uh, whether that's with, uh, public works, or, or recreation, or, uh, our animal control unit. So, um, they're, they're out providing assistance to other departments in this county.
Okay. And, and they, they also prepare all the meals for not just the Correctional Institute, but for all the, the prisoners in the jail as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, uh, the, uh, kitchen at the CI, we operate it. We have, we do have a private vendor that oversees it, but we have forty inmates that work in the kitchen daily. We're on shifts, ten inmates per shift, four shifts. Uh, they pre, prepare the food for the CI and for the jail.
What's the average cost per day for prisoner to feed them, doing it this way?
So per day, per inmate is five dollars and thirty-one cents.
What would it cost us, just off the top of your head, if we had to contract out with somebody locally to feed all the prisoners?
Oh, I would be, uh, afraid to throw that number out there. I can tell you, it'd be more than five dollars and thirty-one cents a day.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanna elaborate here on one other thing before we move forward with this. Talking about the cost of a jail in construction, over the last two weeks, Mr. Tillman and I have spoke to two different contractors that specialize in the construction of jails and other municipal, municipal facilities, okay? Uh, one of them actually quoted us a price of, to build a jail would start at about, what'd he say? Five hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, is that right? Or is that a fire station? Okay. I, I wanna say it was something like seven hundred dollars a square foot, and people go, why does it cost so much? Well, when you talk about, and this was something that I just learned in the last few weeks too, when we build a jail nowadays, they don't go in and put up concrete blocks or, or concrete slabs. They actually go and they prefab, basically, a cell out of a steel case. It's a steel box. They are prefabbed offsite, loaded on the back of a flatbed truck, brought to the site, lifted off of that truck with a crane, and put in place. Now, not only is it all steel, and steel's expensive now if you, if you haven't looked, but when they do that, the fixtures that they put in those have to be designed so that the, the inmates cannot physically get in there and tear it apart, and not only destroy the, 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 the plumbing and the electrical and everything else in there, but also make it where they can't turn those things into weapons. So a lot of that stuff is, is prefabbed in that cell, so it's in there. So when they put that in, they set it in place. Well, you have to have access outside of there. So basically, they build a wall, and then they have a hallway or something that they can go through so that a plumber, electrician, or whatever can work on the utilities in that cell without ever having contact with the prisoner. So we had another one of these contractors that came, and he talked to us about just the doors and the locks for a prison. You have to have a special lock for a prison, for a jail, that cannot be picked. There's only about three companies in the United States that make those da, doors and those locks that are certified for use in a jail or prison. So when we start talking about the cost of this, and people wonder why it costs fifty million dollars, this is why it costs so much money. Okay? And, and I didn't ask these two gentlemen to come up here and try to stick a finger in anybody's eye or anything else, but I want them to come up so people can appreciate the fact that there is some due diligence that goes into this and some consideration to it. You know, nobody wants to build a new jail, okay? Everybody gets upset when they start thinking about prisoners. But the reality of this is, if we don't take care of these people, it will cost us more money in the long run. The other side of this coin is, I know there are plenty of people that go to jail for things that we consider to be very minor, and our first conclusion, we think about jail, is it's all rapists and murderers in there. There are plenty of folks that sit in our jail right now that are there for reasons other than rape and murder. And, and a lot of it is, is folks that we know in this community that are good people that have made a bad choice, and they are sitting there waiting for bond, and they are all innocent until they are proven guilty. We cannot take these folks and just throw them in a darkened room and leave them there for weeks or months while they await trial or await bond. We just can't do it. So there's some thought that goes into this. Um, and I just wanna share that now because these are questions that keep coming up again and again. The other thing that I would like to reiterate is something that Mr. Akins said. We have to build a jail. This is something that was voted on by the people of this county. And, and there's gonna be somebody that's gonna say that, you know, the, the turnout was low, there was only, you know, twenty-five hundred people that voted out of eighty-five hundred people, or, excuse me, eighty-five thousand people in the county. I understand that, but you had an opportunity to vote, and you voted, the people of this county voted to approve this splosh to fund a jail. So now, it's just a matter of, how do we fund this? We can fund this and make it to where this becomes a financial burden, and it's an albatross on our neck by doing it with a twelve-year bond. Or we can do this and allow ourselves some room to fudge by doing it over a twenty-year bond. Now, I can tell you that we've sat down and we have a plan to pay this bond off in ten years. The other piece of this that hasn't been mentioned in here, over the last five years, every splosh that has been voted on in this county has generated excess funds over what was estimated. Okay? This spa, this splosh that was just passed in March was estimated to generate a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars over the next six years. Of that fifty point one million dollars? Fifty-one million dollars was allocated to fund this jail, okay? Now, I'll be the first to tell you that I think that we should have funded the whole thing, the whole sixty million dollars upfront. But you do that, you have to go back to some of the negotiations that took place between the various municipalities in the county, and that's what they worked out with. That's what we have. So now, we can either fund this, and then we take, the other thing that's in this splosh is the any excess funds that come in from this splosh will go directly to pay for this jail. Let that sink in for a second. So we're gonna get fifty million dollars guaranteed upfront. Any money that comes in after everybody else gets their payment goes to pay for this jail, okay? Now, if we take that money that we get in and we let it sit in the bank, it draws interest at ten years, when the note gets called, or we can call that note on the bond, we can pay this off in ten years. And that's what we intend to do. The likelihood of all of us still being here in that ten years is very low. But that is the plan that we will set forth. And it's up to the people in this room to hold whoever's here accountable to make sure that they follow through with that plan. I don't like it. I don't like having to go into debt more than anybody else does, but we've gotta pay for a jail. We can't continue to kick this can down the road. Our jail operates right now at about eighty-five percent capacity, if you talk to the sheriff, and it makes it very difficult for him to manage that jail. That is one of his constitutional responsibilities that he has to do. I think I've beat the horse enough, and I'm gonna leave it to these gentlemen to provide any further discussion or questions that they have now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, and Randy, I'm gonna try to keep you to set where you at, and I'll take the warden after this, but there's been a lot of things, and, uh, the chairman's correct. We've been charged by the people of Bullock County through the splosh to build this jail. It was voted on by the citizens of Bullock County, just like the agriculture arrangement that everybody's, well, y'all wasted our tax money. That's not, that's not these gentlemen's job up here. Our, our job is to figure out how to do it now because the voters have told us how. I mean, told us what to do. And that's all not gloom and doom. Oh, I'm gonna ask Randy, and I'm gonna, I should know, I should remember it, but what, the federal prisoners, what were they paying Bullock County? Warden may have to answer that before they were moved.
Mr. Rushing, I'm not exactly sure. I can tell you that seven, seven years ago, before I came here, I was, uh, working at a facility that housed federal inmates, US Marshals, which is what would be, uh, housed in a local jail under contract, if that sheriff chose to do that. Seven years ago, it was fifty-five dollars a day. I do not have a, an updated, but I can, I would, I would guesstimate it's probably close to sixty-five now.
That, that's pretty close, and I, and I want everybody to understand the reason this is having to be built. Is we got a, uh, the Bullock County CI, what year was it built? Fifty-three?
Around forty-six, uh, the first part of it, yes, sir.
Forty-six, and it's built out of concrete blocks that remind you of a hog fairing house, what comes to my mind, and why the state of Georgia is still allowing Bullock County to house inmates in that, in that facility, I'll never know. And this has been gone over by this commission since before I was here, and since I've been here the whole time. Matter of fact, when Randy Tillman come on, he retired from the state of Georgia, and we had lost our warden, and so we considered closing the CI. Well, when you consider closing that CI for any reason, whether we do it as a board or if the state comes in and does it, I can't remember the numbers of the labor force that they provide to Bullock County, but automatically, you'll get a, I don't know, three or four mil, million increase on your taxes to hire the help, to work the recreation departments, to clean the federal, the government buildings, and just all that they do. Uh, and with that, and the reason they're trying to add on another part is is because that's gonna update the CI and bring the federal prisoners back. And that in itself will surpass any interest rate, and like Commissioner Bennett did say, and they don't hold me to my numbers because that's- And like Commissioner Bennett did say, and they don't hold me to my numbers because that is a lot of numbers and I've got a small brain, but, oh. We based, before we put it out for a vote, I think we based it on the splosh bringing in a hundred and hundred and thirty-eight. I knew it had fluctuated between a hundred and twenty-three or something like that, and a hundred and thirty-eight. We had initially planned on sixty million to come straight off the top for the jail. And of course, with the other municipalities and the service delivery agreement that we all had to get to, it was fifty, but every other municipality agreed if we'd done that fifty-one million, then anything that went beyond their part of the splosh that was agreed upon would go directly to pay for this facility. And like Commissioner Bennett said, uh, and we had figured in oh-eight, too, if it was a oh-eight year, uh, back when splosh fell off, we took the low road on bidding this job, so to try to postpone it, which I don't know if we could even possibly do that, I mean, we got to build it anyway. Uh, your material costs and construction costs without the federal inmates getting here today that the jail opened would way surpass any interest that you're going to pay on the money to build the jail. So I just wanted, and I want to straighten the splosh tax out because there's a lot of people out there that don't understand. Everybody believes in sales tax, and I do, too. It's the fairest tax there is. But when you have a splosh, everybody, like Ms. Todd, she comes to the meeting, she understands. She was in, she was in control of this for a long time. When you vote on a splosh, there's several things listed on that splosh that you're voting for now. I mean, you're not voting just for, we're going to get a penny and then we get to do anything we want to with it. There's a long list of stuff that you as a voter vote for, and this was one of the things that was voted for, just like that culture arena and several other things. And so when it goes to a vote and it's passed, then it's our job to do what y'all tell us to do. And so I just wanted to clarify that, and, uh, that's all I've got to say.
I just got a question about the federal inmates. This facility, this phase will not hold or house federal inmates, right? Because of the, the bond situation, we cannot hold, hold or house federal inmates in this phase. I think it was like either phase two or three that was projected to house the federal inmate. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. I believe it is, uh, Mr. Newkirk, phase three. It is not phase one, definitely. I think it's phase three.
Okay.
Mike, Roger, Roger, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's correct. The federal tax laws, um, prevent you from how, well, you can, let me, let me drop that. You can, you can issue taxable bonds if you expect the house, the federal prisoners there. We were told that they wouldn't be a house in phase one, it would be phase two or three. But we can still do the bond issue, we just have to do them taxable at a higher interest rate.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, something else I do want to say is, you know, the citizens of this county did vote for this. Um, now, you know, they can say, we, we can say that we didn't know about the, the bonds and all, all that stuff, but I, I'm going to vote the way that the citizens of this county voted, and they wanted a jail. I'm encouraged, uh, uh, I'm leaning more towards a twelve-year bond. Um, that would save us almost seven million dollars in the end over a twelve-year versus a twenty-year, which is basically a whole year's worth of splosh that we could use on something else. Um, I know some of the other ones want to do a twenty-year, but I'm, I, I would recommend a twelve-year to save out close to seven, seven to seven and a half million dollars on that.
Do we have, go ahead.
What I'd like to ask is, you know, if we do a twenty-year and we pay it off early, then that's fine, well and good. If you do a twelve-year and you have a oh-eight, and we run out of time with our bonds, what's, what takes place then? To one of the fellows that can answer that, anybody? I just know it's better to.
If the splosh money doesn't come in, or if, yeah, if, if the splosh fails, the referendum fails, or if the city negotiations don't go well and they don't want to devote that much of that splosh money to the debt repayment, then we would have to pay for it out of the general fund.
Doug, can you, do you mind going over that again about the, I'll use the term cushion, but the, the, the relief that that gives us a twenty versus a twelve?
A- absolutely. Again, the, the, the splosh cannot be legally pledged towards the repayment of the bonds. We can have all the internal projections, but the actual bondholders themselves, the purchasers of the bonds are only being secured by the full faith and credit of the county. So in the event that splosh funds aren't available, the way that we need, need to sell these bonds is from the full faith and credit. So start, you know, we have a pretty good sense that the first six years are going to be covered by this splosh because it is approved, but years beyond year seven through twelve or twenty, depending on what structure the, the board wishes to pursue, is that there's no guarantee and we cannot legally pledge this splosh towards the repayment of those bonds. Um, or the bondholders don't have that. We can internally do all that. And so if there is an oh-eight event or the negotiations with the city, there's not enough dollars to service the debt, then ultimately the general fund is on the hook. And the bondholders have the right, or the, you know, the full faith and credit and have the ability to make the Board of Commissioners levy a millage rate or a tax towards the repayment of the debt. And so when we analyze the potential impact of the twelve-year versus the, um, the twenty-year option, if for something were, were to happen, the potential millage equivalent impact, whether that be through increased millage rates or cuts to the budget or other revenue sources. If there was not enough money in the twelve-year scenario, based upon the digest as of today, that millage equivalent impact was one point three mils. Um, under the twenty-year scenario, that millage equivalent impact almost gets cut in half and goes down to point six eight, point six nine mils. Um, and so the, what, what that comes down to is roughly two million dollars of differential and impact on the general fund. So as you guys are thinking about your current budget today, um, you know, and you're trying to find ways to balance the budget and, and, and make cuts to expenditures, put yourself in a position seven years from now under the twenty-year scenario, if something were to happen, you'd have to find two point four million dollars in your budget to do, to, to make the debt service payments. Under the twelve-year scenario, that number increases almost two million dollars to roughly four and a half million dollars. So that's kind of the position that we have taken that adds some flexibility that, you know, in come twenty thirty-two, which believe it or not, you blank, it'll be here, is that if for some reason, um, that there were something to occur, you can't bind future boards, all that other good stuff, or there's another major pressing project that needs to happen. Let's say there's, knock on wood, a hurricane that comes through and destroys an admin building, right? You need to build an admin building. That needs to go on the next splosh. You're like, I can't afford to take dollars, one-third of this splosh off the top to pay for the jail because we need to build an admin building. Well, that twelve-year scenario puts a lot more pressure, um, on your, on your general fund. And so while in talking with staff, while it is certainly a little bit more expensive to go, even with the early payoff scenario for the tune of roughly two point eight million dollars of additional interest cost, we felt like the budgetary flexibility and the ability to incorporate future capital needs into the, into the splosh was worth the potential additional costs that would be incurred from pursuing the twenty-year option. I know I rambled there a little bit. Along with it answering your question, but I thought it was helpful context.
Yeah, I understand. And I know it would be higher millage rate, but it'd be only for six years versus fourteen years. I, I got the numbers right here. The, um, the twelve-year note, you're looking at seventy-seven million point nine, basically. And a twenty-year note, you're looking at, um, eighty-four and a half. So, you know, uh, if the taxpayers are paying on it, I'd much rather go ahead and get it knocked out quicker so we don't have to drag out almost seven million dollars over the, over the other fourteen years. But that's just my recommendation.
Can I ask a question? Would you, could you do a refinance if you did a twelve-year and you got to the end and you needed to stretch it out further?
Yes, that, that, that could be a potential option is that you could look at what's called restructuring of the bonds. Um, obviously with that, you're taking interest rate risk, um, as well as paying additional costs, but that is a potential solution. Is that you could look at what's called a restructuring of the bond to go over a longer term in the future. That's another good point. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I understand the intention is to pay it off in ten years, but if there's nothing that's holding us to that ten years, who's going to want to give up the extra money when they want to put it somewhere else? So if we do twelve years, then we know it's got to be done in twelve years. If we need to refinance, we refinance.
The twelve-year, uh, where at the expense of the interest rate or the risk if we refinance. We're going to pay this thing off early if we can. The twenty-year actually buys us insurance over something happening to the economy.
Do we have any other questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to clean up the comment that I made. Uh, stated that I would be estimating on the sheriff's population right now. His total number of general population beds are four forty-three. And he's currently at three fifty-five, which is eighty percent. Stated that eighty to eighty-five percent is considered full for operational purposes of a jail. So he's, he's at eighty percent today, and that's with, I believe, most of our, uh, college youth have, have left town, so. Just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
It started with everybody, but Doug, I have a quick question for you. Um, I was looking back at the numbers and the difference between, is the, is the cost of the, of the, the twenty-year option seven million or is it three million?
The cost of the twenty-year option is roughly seven million if it gets held to final maturity, meaning that if it never gets paid off early.
Right.
Yep, and if, but if it gets paid off early, instead of costing seven million, it's just under, just under three, roughly two point eight million.
So, so, isn't it, isn't it fair to say that the cost of only the twenty-year option, if you're going to, going to prepay it in ten, is, is, is it free?
Correct.
All right, we're going to get crazy here and try to put this on the screen so that everybody can see what we're talking about.
And that twenty-year note paying it off early, um, on that ten-year, I think it is, I just had it right here on my phone, it is, um, eighty point eight million dollars. But then also, if you did a ten-year payout on the twelve-year note and you paid it off early, I think we figured up it'd be about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you'd save on top of that. So really, that would be, you know, if we plan on paying it off in ten, twelve, ten years anyway, we could get that down to, I think, seventy-seven million point three versus the seventy-seven million point nine. So we'd actually pick up another six, seven hundred thousand dollars on interest if we paid it off early on the twelve-year note.
All those days in the audio video club, pay off.
Can y'all see that out there? Just trying to make it so that everybody can see what, what we're talking about here with the numbers. And I'll try to summarize what we've got here. You've got scenario one, which is basically, it, it, well, it is a, a twelve-year bond with the, the conventional payoff at twelve years. Is that correct? And then you have scenario two, which is a twenty-year bond with an early payoff. And then you have scenario two with no payoff, which is a twenty-year bond that we pay off over twenty years and what the cost of it would be.
And you said a millage rate increase on, if splosh did not pass, and a millage rate increase on the twenty-year note would be, how many mils?
Yeah, this, it's right here on this part in the right-hand section.
Okay.
Um, one point two nine in scenario one. That's assuming today's digest and no growth in the digest. Um, and then you can see on the right-hand side, the mil, millage rate equivalent was point six nine, point six eight, depending on the, the rounding.
Actually, it's reasonable to assume though there will be some growth in the digest over that period of time. Just like there would be some inflationary increase in the construction cost.
Agreed.
Any further questions, discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the twelve-year bond.
Do we have a second? One last call for a second. Hearing no second of the motion, motion dies. We have another motion.
Second.
Motion. Well, motion carries with a second for a twenty-year bond. All in favor? Motion carries with, or excuse me, all opposed. Motion carries with five, four, and one against. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, this item number one, County Attorney Jeff Akins, approval resolution to terminate the Statesboro Fire Tax District.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think this is a subject that's very familiar to everyone by this point. Um, and it's just a necessity required by the counties, uh, taking over the five, what is currently the Five Mile District, Statesboro Fire District, um, as of July first, which, in which the city currently pursuant to intergovernmental agreement, Statesboro currently provides fire protection services within the Statesboro Fire District, which consists of those areas and the unincorporated area of Bullet County that are within a five-mile travel distance of one of the City of Statesboro's fire stations. The intergovernmental agreement will terminate as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and has not been renewed or extended. Consequently, there will no longer be a need for the Statesboro Fire Tax District, and the approval of the presented resolution will terminate the Statesboro Fire Tax, this tax district as of July first, twenty twenty-five.
And I'm going to try my best to summarize these next three items here real quick. All in one, one fell swoop. So what we currently have with our fire tax districts is we have two separate fire tax districts. You have the, the district that is the Five Mile District, and then you have the rural fire district. So the Five Mile District provides, or if you live in there, you pay a set rate, um, for your fire tax. If you live in the rural district, you have a different rate for your fire tax. What's going to happen with this, if, if both of these motions pass, number one and two, is we will terminate the Statesboro Fire Tax District and the Rural Fire Tax District. And then with Statesboro Fire Tax District and the rural fire tax district. And then with item number three, we will have one fire district that will have one set rate. For the entire county for everything outside of the city of Statesboro. Just wanna try to provide some clarification there before we go forward. So. Go ahead, Nick.
Um, do we know what the new tax will be? Cause I know right now the, the Five Mile is two point seven and the rural is three. I'm assuming we're moving everything to two point seven. So we don't have a tax increase?
I currently, in the tentative budget, have left it at three mills. Um, based on the digest numbers that have been provided by the tax assessor's office, I would not recommend going down to two point seven mills. It, that would greatly strain the, uh. The ability to pay the current employees that we have just hired to service the entire district. Um, a small decrease from three possibly could be accomplished, but I would not recommend going any lower than two point nine. If, if that's what you really wanna do.
Okay, appreciate it. So the Five Mile radius is gonna get a tax increase, and until the ISO ratings come down, the ISO ratings are gonna go up. I just wanna make sure that was clear.
Right, but, well, you're not, you're not deciding what the millage rate's gonna be today. You're just terminating two tax districts and creating another.
That's cor-
That's all you're doing today.
That's correct, and you all will have the ability to set the millage rate at what you want it to be. So that is a decision for another day.
Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, I'm gonna ask for a motion on this.
What are we doing, one at a time?
One at a time.
I move to approve. Revolution one.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number two, approve resolution to terminate the rural fire district.
Yes, sir. And I think you already explained it adequately. I'll just note that the. Rural Fire Tax District currently consists of all the unincorporated area that's outside the current Statesboro Fire Tax District. Which you just voted to terminate as of, uh, June thirtieth. And the cities of Brooklyn, Portland Register, because the county provides fire services to those municipalities as well. Um, and this resolution will terminate that special district.
Any questions, comments? Not, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve later, resolution number two.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number three, approve resolution to establish the Bullock County Fire Tax District.
Yes, sir. This will, um, as you explained earlier, this will establish a new Bullock County Fire Tax District that would include all the unincorporated areas of the county. And the, uh, areas within the municipalities of Brooklyn, Portland Register. And it will become effective as of July first. And then you will set the millage rate for this district when you set the M and O millage, uh, in August.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And then item number four, county attorney Jeff Akins, approve a contingent fee retainer agreement with Brockstedt Mandalas Fed- Fred- Federico LLC at all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure I can pronounce all those names either. Um, yes, the law firm of Brockstedt Mandalas or Mandalas Federico LLC and others, this, these are some other law firms involved too. Have offered to represent Bullock County as a plaintiff in multi-district litigation regarding alleged insulin price fixing, fixing. Pursuant to the presented agreement. Now, this litigation would involve claims related to the self-funded employee help plan. And would seek to recover amounts the plan is allegedly overpaid for insulin and other related drugs. Uh, there was a brochure that was presented with the agenda that explains the nature of the litigation. And has brief bios of some of the attorneys involved. And the agreement basically provides that the law firms will be entitled to a contingency fee of twenty-five percent of any recovery. And to reimbursement of expenses out of any recovery. And they've told me that they don't expect the expenses to be very much in this. Um, cause it's already an ongoing litigation and I think it's somewhere up in New Jersey. It's one of these procedures where they take. If there's a multiple cases involving the same subject and defendants. A lot of times, uh, federal courts, there's a procedure where they, it's not a class action, but it's kinda similar. They consolidate them all in one federal district court regardless of where the plaintiffs and defendants are located. Um, the important, another point, important point is that if there is no recovery, the county will not have to pay anything. So we're not. We're not really taking a risk by doing this. Um. There probably will, be, will, will be some staff time required to. Support this litigation, but again, I've been assured it won't be a lot of time. And the brochure paints, you know. I think maybe the most optimistic picture of what they hope to recover. So we. It'd be great if we could recover, you know, this could help go toward offsetting the, uh. Unexpected deficit in the health plan. If we were to cut, recover some money from this, so. I would recommend approval.
Mr. Akins, can you talk to us about what kind of staff time they're, they're talking about involving with this?
Probably. Twenty to forty hours, maybe.
And basically what they're looking at is just trying to, to gather the. The number of insurers that we have, or number of people that we've insured that required.
Yeah, but I think they're gonna be able to get that from the, th- these are cases against PBMs, park pharmacy benefit managers. Um, who they allege, and again, all of this is allegations, so I'm not. Saying there's any, it's been proven, but, um. They, they allege that they conspired with. Some of the drug companies to inflate. The price of, uh. Insulin. And I think they're making claims under the racketeering, uh. Organized Rico racketeering. Anyway, the one that was. That's an act that was originally intended to go after mobsters, but they, it's been used to, uh, go after. A lot of other people. That's one of their points is if they can make a claim under that, they can triple, triple the damages and, uh. So, I mean, it could be significant. I, I don't know, but. I don't think there'll be a lot of staff time required. We'll probably depend on our. Health insurance broker for a lot of this. And their guidance, but I think mainly we're gonna be have, having to provide copies of contracts with PBMs. That we've had, so. It'll be chasing that down, but I don't know that we'll have to actually go back, go find, you know, find how many. Employees we've had on insulin for X number of years. I think, I think they'll discover that from the PBMs.
But, but essentially what's going on here though is because we self-insure. We're paying for these medications for, for folks that require them.
That's correct.
That are on our insurance plan.
That's correct.
And because the price has been fixed at an excessive rate, it's cost to the taxpayer here more money to pay for those, or. That medication for these, these folks that require it.
That's correct, and their brochure, if you will note, says if you, if you're self-insured and you have at least five hundred. Covered lives on your plan, then you probably have, uh, that's sort of the threshold that, which they think it would be worth participating. And we have more than five hundred. I think we have over a thousand, so. I think it's worth, I think it's worth pursuing.
Do you have any other questions or discussion on this issue?
But the thing is, it ain't costing us nothing.
That's right. And that's why I say I think it's worth pursuing.
Um, office time, which.
Other than whatever staff time we had to put into it. So if they don't recover anything, if they lose all the way around. We, we won't have to pay anything. What's probably gonna happen, what usually happens in these kinda cases is they end up reaching some sort of settlement, you know? And, uh. I wouldn't be surprised if that's what happens, but.
Any further questions on this issue? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a motion. Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So we're gonna circle back now and cover the items that were on the consent agenda that were moved to new business. Starting with number one, approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of the road in Broadmore Estates subdivision.
Good morning, Chairman Bennett and Commissioners. Uh, I just wanna take an opportunity before we get in any deep discussion here. With the, the acceptance of roads, subdivisions, uh, road maintenance. Um, I've had this discussion with several of y'all over the last years. Um. We're at a point that, uh. Accepting these roads, uh, from all subdivision development is going to continue to increase our maintenance and labor responsibilities in the future. Which means our budgets are going to continue to increase by doing that. Um, I've researched it over the years with some of the larger municipalities. And, um, they've all come to a point to where they have to stop accepting development roads and put the maintenance of those road systems and drainage onto. The homeowners association, um, to maintain that. Uh, we know that we've had problems in the past with acceptances and, and the maintenance issues that come from that in a very short time. Generally paved roads are supposed to have somewhere between fifteen to twenty year lifespan. And over the past few years, we've accepted a lot that we've done maintenance, major maintenance on, uh, inside of those few years, five, seven years. Um, so I say all of that to say, as we go into consideration for these two subdivisions or any subdivisions in the future. Um, whether we have to make policy changes or whether our policies currently just. Uh, doesn't really obligate us to accept them, but there's an expectation from the developers that we will accept. Um, making those determinations and trying to make a plan moving forward. Um, we've been trying to deal with some of this over the past few years. We've, we've tried to put together committees. Um, to look at these roads, um, before we, before they come to you for acceptance. Um, so all of those things are in the, the stage of working, uh, working through. Uh, but as we consider these two, um, I know that we're, we're on the hook for them at this point. Uh, we know that they. We've gone through some punch lists, uh, and, you know, if you have any specific questions, I'll leave that to the engineering department. Uh, but I just wanted to take the opportunity as we address these, this, to go ahead and put that out there. That, uh, that we've gotta look at this for the future to continue to accept all of these development roads going forward is going to put. An additional tax burden on the maintenance and, and the labor aspects of having to deal with that. So if you have any questions?
Um, can you just kinda explain what the, the process is whenever y'all go out there? I think you and, or the public works and the engineering gets together and kinda go out there and look at some things. Can you just kinda explain what y'all look for, et cetera?
Um, generally speaking, we look for road conditions, uh, to see if there's any signs of deterioration at the time that we're doing the inspection. Um, whether that's pavement cracking, uh, separations, um. Drainage issues around, you know, a lot of these are, are inverted roads, inverted crown roads and, and you have some drainage issues at the down drain boxes sometimes. So we try to see all of that. Um, we've never gone to the point of. Uh, running cameras through the drainage system. That's an additional expense that it would take to actually look through some of that. Um, but there's been suggestions made, uh, over time for, for developers to correct things. Um, it has gotten better in the last few years, uh, but there are still some maintenance issues that occur. In very short timeframes after those inspection processes.
Do we test the thickness of like asphalt and the thickness of rock on the base, or do we just see what the, the lipstick on the pig looks like on the top and that's all we can do?
That's something that was addressed several years ago when, uh, as the engineering department evolved, uh, to more staff. And, and some of that was the inspection process during the construction. Now, some of these are, are older subdivisions and they're coming in, um, for acceptance now. But they were not part of the inspection process back then. Um, I'll leave that question to engineering as to how did they determine that or if they've made any efforts to, to determine thicknesses of base or, or pavement. Um, I think that mostly over the past years, it was an assumption that they followed the guidelines of the county because we really didn't have onsite inspectors at that time for, for that part of the process. But that has been rectified now. They do have field inspectors going out for drainage, uh, as it's installed and pavement base and all for compaction and everything.
So possibly moratorium on these road acceptance might need to take place so we can get the, get it figured out right. So instead of we keep accepting poorly constructed roads?
I'm gonna leave that one to y'all. Um, I would suggest that we do have to look at it at some point in the future as to whether we continue to accept any roads. Because no matter whether you accept some that have been there for years or, or new ones. Um, there's going to be a maintenance process on them at some point in time. There's going to be a maintenance and labor impact against the budget at some point. And that, it, we're all looking at the budget and we're thinking that we need to do better and we need to do different and. You know, so that's one of the places that I think we can do different and we can put that responsibility back on homeowner associations. Because that is gonna continue to grow. That, that maintenance cost over the years is gonna continue to impact us more and more.
Thank you.
Any others?
And, Mr. Butler.
Uh, you may wanna bring Mr. Nelson up here. How are these projects funded? And what county roads in this county would be eligible for these funds?
So what we're, basically what we're talking about is the county's acceptance of development roads in subdivisions. And once we accept them into the county road system, then they're funded through our budget system. Whether that is TSPLOS in maintenance or whether that is general funds, but it's, it comes set as, as an, an expense to the taxpayers to continue to accept these roads.
But what other county roads would be eligible for this money? What I'm get, what I'm getting at is there are roads in this county that the public uses much more than this private. Development would be. So in prioritizing the expenditures of money, it was seen like that the county roads, Mud Road, Old River Road. Uh, Brooklyn Lee Field Road would be a priority over subdivision roads.
Well, I think that's where I'm trying to go when, with the idea of not continuing to accept development roads in subdivisions and putting that responsibility either on developers or. Or homeowner associations so that we can redirect our money to the higher traffic roads, higher speed roads. And give them a better service than, than having. and give them a better service than, than having to worry about all of the, uh, subdivision development roads that have maybe a lot of, have considerable traffic on them, but it's generally low speed traffic. So that's just my, my logic to try to cut on budget expenses moving forward on maintenance of the roads.
I concur.
I'm just gonna add Ron Nelson Engineering. So I was gonna add that other options for funding come from, uh, local maintenance improvement grant from GDOT as far as our annuals. Um, we can use that and also this LRA money, this local road assistance money we've had supplemented last two fiscal years. Uh, the L-MIG money, local maintenance improvement grant from GDOT does require a thirty percent match. So we have to match that with our own funds, thirty percent to use that up. So we have to have a plan for that. And then obviously, uh, the, the LRA as of the last two fiscal years, there's no match on that, on those funds. But I, I, I do understand what, uh, Commissioner Davis is saying as far as trying to work towards more of our, um, roadway system versus the, uh, trying to look into these neighborhood roadways and trying to spend our funds for those.
I've talked to, I've talked to Dink several times on this issue and Mr. Nelson is kind of new to the, new to the county. Uh, in the past, the way this works is it's a developer, not county, not talking about county roads, we talking about subdivision roads. Mr. Nelson, correct me on everything else. Subdivision roads, when somebody develops a piece of property and they go through the planning zoning phase, they, they go through James Post Office and he requires them sixty foot right away. He requires whether it's inverted or not road. And if they agree to do that, then the engineering department is supposed to go out and take a roll test on the roads and, and, and check the thickness of the asphalt and make sure that it's done exactly like the county says it's to be done. And the agreement is, or the old agreement, I'm not saying we ain't got to change the agreement, but everything that's been built so far is pretty much like Dink stated, we, he understands that we got to take these, these two roads here, but going forward from that, if you're gonna change anything. But now there's several things and I'm not trying to stick my finger in Dink's eyes, but there, there's several things that you need to consider when you do this now. And because I've been through it with my own, a property of my own, if the county does not accept that, and this will be Jeff Akins' ball of wax. If the county does not accept that road in that subdivision, you could lose school buses being able to go in there and several other things. So if you want to live in a subdivision to where your child has to walk from the back out to the closest, now I don't know, maybe there's some kind of, but just to say we ain't gonna take any more subdivision roads at this point in time. You could be running into more trouble that, I mean, like Dink said, we need to look at moving forward on the next subdivision. Not the ones that the county has done inspecting and the county has done told the property owners and developers that they would agree to take the roads if they done, if they crossed every T and dotted every I. Now I do understand some of them get by and have some washouts and all that. Now they could be made to fix whatever Mr. Nelson goes out and tells them to fix. But just to bring that to light, that if the county does not accept the subdivision roads, and I don't know, Mr. Akins, I have to say, but that, that kills the board of education from driving their bus down to a private road and run over a child or something and they ain't gonna send their buses down there. So there's a lot more to, a lot more to this thing than to say we ain't taking them county subdivision roads. So, I understand.
And I understand that. And, and the, the board of education, I'm not gonna speak for them. I will say that I do know of private roads that the board of education does travel, uh, that are not county maintained. Um, now whether that's intentional or just from having done that for so many years, I don't know. I don't know whether they're not taking any additional ones or whatever, but, but anyway, um, my point was just the overall cost of maintenance and, and labor moving forward to continue to accept all of these mileages of road. And right now we're at a break point to where we're fixing to see a lot more development with all the industry and everything that's happening. Um, it's just, I see it becoming a financial burden as we move forward.
And I, and I totally understand. I just, I know these fellows up here are real, real familiar with Pulaski Point and I don't want to wind up with a bunch of Pulaski points. So that where the homeowners association, we, we don't know who's what, we don't know, but we, we gonna receive all the complaints and all the. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody. Mr. Akins?
Yes, sir.
Would a motion not to approve, which is a do nothing motion, would us just not be approving this at this time and leave the door open to consider it in the future?
Are you talking about these particular roads today on the agenda?
These two particular items that are in front of us right now.
I would recommend you approve though. And here's why. And this, this might take a minute, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain where I, because I, I reviewed, we actually have two ordinances now that may apply depending on the timing. And, um, I think, I think Mr. Rushing is correct when he says you can't just cut it off. And, and I think any subdivisions that have been approved and are in development stage at this point are gonna come under one of these two ordinances. And the two ordinances I'm referring to is the old subdivision ordinance, which is now appendix B one and the code of ordinances. And then appendix B is the new subdivision ordinance. And both of, and I'll just briefly go over the provisions, but both of them, um, state that basically unless a count, unless a road is identified as a private road or a private street in the development stage and it has to be identified as such on the final plat, it has to be in, uh, included in, uh, sales contracts. It's supposed to be, we don't have any way to monitor that, but, but it's supposed to be on the plat that it is a private street. So if it's not identified as a private street or road on, on a, the final plat, that it's supposed to be a public road. And the old ordinance, and this would apply to any subdivision that was approved prior to the date of the new ordinance, which was, uh, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. So basically any subdivision that received approval a little over two years ago and is still in development is gonna come under this old ordinance. And what it says is that the county should not accept title to or assume responsibility for maintaining any street until at least one year after the street has been paved and until at least fifty percent of the lots have been built upon. So both of those conditions have to be met before the county, um, can accept the road or the street. But the intent is that they are to be public roads. The county's ultimately supposed to accept them. And what's happened over the years, I've been here almost thirty years and for, for a number of years, what, what was happening was the county didn't have any way to monitor when these thresholds were met. We just didn't have any, we didn't have a system to keep up with it. And the developers, for a number of years, they didn't pay any attention to it. They were just worried about building houses and, and getting out of there, you know? And so what would happen is after a number of years, when the roads started deteriorating, then the homeowners, they'd come to the county and wanna, what are y'all gonna, we, we, our roads need fixing, you know? They, they're assuming, and rightfully and reasonably so, they bought a house in a subdivision. They assumed the roads were public, that they were maintained by the government authority with jurisdiction over them. Well, we would look at the roads and we'd discover that, well, the developer never really, he never turned them over to the county. So we would say, well, we're not, the county's not going to accept them until the developer and we, we'd talk to the developer, if we could find them still, if they were still around. And say, okay, here's a punch list. You've got to go out and fix these things before the county will accept these roads. Sometimes they would, sometimes they wouldn't. And, uh, I will say we've managed to clear up most of these over the years. I think we're, there's still some out there, Pulaski Point being one of the poster children, I guess, for that. Um, but that's the intent under the old ordinance. They're supposed to be county roads. Now, the new ordinance maintains that intent. But what we did with the new ordinance, which we tried to eliminate this problem about you get ten years down the road and, and the developer still owns the roads and they hadn't been turned over and they deteriorated in the county. So what the new ordinance contemplates is it, it requires, number one, less like under the old ordinance, that they post a hundred percent surety or letter of credit or similar security instrument that guarantees a hundred percent performance of the cost of the improvements. Now, once the improvements are completed and inspected, the county is supposed to be inspecting these to ensure they're, they're built to county standards and I, there may be some issues with that. I, I don't know. That's not my area. But, um, it says at the time the county accepts and assumes ownership, and this is other infrastructure too, of the new streets, signs, drainage systems, or other public improvements. The developer should be required to provide the county with security for the maintenance of the streets, signs and drainage systems for a period of three years commencing with the county's formal acceptance of same or until seventy-five percent structural build out has occurred, whichever's occur, whichever occurs later. And that security has to be in an amount equal tw- to twenty percent of the cost of the improvement. So what that means is if they develop it very rapidly and they've built out seventy-five percent in two years, well, they still have to maintain that security bond for three years. If it goes a lot slower than that, let's say it takes them ten years to build out seventy-five percent, well, they've got to maintain that security, maintenance security for ten years. And then it says ninety days prior to the release of the maintenance security, the county's supposed to do a final inspection. And the developer's supposed to make any corrections. Make any, you know, if there's been any deterioration, they have to fix it. They have to repair it before the county releases the maintenance bond. And if they don't, then the county will, uh, draw on the letter of credit or, or the surety bond to make, uh, the payment. But now one thing that's new in the ordinance, and this, this even makes it more clear that these are supposed to be public streets. It says a street which is not accepted as a public street should have a status of a private street. Private, private streets may be approved for development only when they are, one, eligible for categorization as a local street. That's in the old ordinance. The new provision says, and two, where access from any such private street to a publicly accepted road shall be physically restricted or controlled with an entry barrier. So now under the new ordinance, unless you have a gated subdivision, you can't have a private road. It's gotta, it's gotta be a public road. And I think the thought behind these new provisions was to try to get the developer, to try to get the county to accept the roads earlier in the process with some security from the developer, that they're still gonna be responsible for, for maintenance for a certain period of time. So that we didn't have these things fall through the cracks. And, uh, you know, you're, because some people have been just left in limbo out there and it's just not a good system that we, that we've had over the years now. Now, a lot of the developers have, have gotten clued into it and they're, they're sending the steeds on the roads when they, you know, when the time clicks and we give them a punch list and for most part, I think they're pretty good about going out and doing it so they can turn the roads over to us. And that's the case with these two roads today. So I, so I think they need to be approved. But Mr. Rushing kind of hit the nail on the head, I think, when he said this needs to be carefully considered because it's really a public policy issue. And, and I'm gonna tell you, the, the bare legal issue is, no, you don't have to accept subdivision roads if you don't want to. You can make, you can say they're all gonna be private roads, not the ones that are currently, but you, you, you're gonna have to amend these ordinances, subdivision ordinance. And we'll probably end up having, having appendix B two and appendix B one and, and appendix B if we do that, because the ones currently in development, I don't think you can change the horse in midstream. But if you want going forward to say the county's not gonna accept or be responsible for any subdivision roads, they're all gonna be private. I think you can do that. I think it needs to be, uh, disclosed on the plat. People need to know that they're buying a lot in a subdivision with a private road. Um, I can just tell you from experience, I think I think you'll end up with a lot of deteriorated infrastructure in subdivisions because I don't think trying to hold developers accountable down the road or homeowners associations. I mean, I don't think that's gonna be a workable or feasible solution, but you, I don't know what else you could do really. Uh, I mean, I live in Hunter's Point and our, our roads are county roads and they were well built. Donald East Smith did a good job out there. They held up real good for twenty years. But they started deteriorating and the, the county finally put a couple of the main roads on a resurfacing list. Now, if our homeowners association had had to do that, it wouldn't have gotten done. I'm just gonna tell you, we couldn't, we couldn't afford it. And we've got a pretty good functioning homeowners association as homeowners associations go. So I, I do, I'm not telling, I'm not advising you what to do. I mean, there's all kinds of different considerations, but I agree with Mr. Rushing that it needs to be carefully thought through and you need to look at down the road, what, what ramifications might come from whatever action you take. So that's the only thing I would say.
And, and another thing that I forgot to mention, but I mean, and the reason I know this is because I own some roads that's paved that I, I didn't want to give to the county. And school buses are one issue. Of course, I knew that when I done it. Another issue is especially, and of course, all of us are gonna get older, I hope, because they're one remnant of that. And when you get older, the, uh, US Postal Service is not required. You have to put up a NDBU, which is a letter collection center and all they are required to do is to service that center. They do not go door to door anymore on a private because accidents, run over people's pets, children, bumping cars. So all they're required to do, you have to buy it through the post office and you have to pay for it and you have to build the station and they'll service that station. So there's a lot of things, I totally understand what Dink's saying. I totally understand everybody's concerns, but that's just some of the things you need to take in consideration. I'm not gonna bite my tongue about this. I can probably tell you because I know pretty much any businessman that has done this or woman, uh, if y'all promised y'all was gonna take my roads and didn't take them and I built them to your specs and I see you right over at that big house right over there and that's exactly where you're going if you don't pass these roads that you agreed to take.
Mr. Rushing, I do, I'm, James, James, yeah. Aren't, aren't they requiring that even on any, any subdivisions, even if they're public roads now? The post office?
Yes.
Yeah, over a certain number of hours.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Mr. Akins?
My biggest thing was, everybody's complaining about the budget. Everybody wants you to cut, stay within budget, whatever. This is going to continue to compound and it is going to be a costly maintenance process in the future. So when you look at these things, know that they are a cost. They are a continued cost. It is a compounded cost going forward.
Mr. Akins, twice in your legal rendition, I heard you say you advised to approve. I'm not foolish enough to go against legal advice.
Well, I will tell you, there's another one coming up, you know, a couple of meetings probably, and it's the one out off Country Club Road, uh, can't remember the name of it. Yeah, yeah. That one they submitted two or three years ago and it was not fifty percent built out. So we rejected it. But now it is and, and I think there was a punch list, Ron, what they completed.
That's right. So we, we should be moving towards making.
That's right. So we, we should be moving towards making recommendation to you.
Right, okay. So that, you got one more coming up soon.
Um, maybe at the next morning meeting, I'm not gonna ask you to do it for two weeks, but maybe at the next one, let's try to come up with some um. Recommendations, working with Public Works and what we could do to try to improve this, you know. Some of the testing I did down in Richmond Hill twenty-two years ago in the construction industry hadn't even made it over here yet. And it's nothing against what y'all are doing right now, but I think we lack a lot in testing. We used to have to do asphalt coring, rock coring, stuff like that to make sure that, you know, we had an inch and a half asphalt or six inches of rock that we don't even do right now on final. And I, I think that's something that's hurting the, hurting the community and I've seen some of the. I got some of the numbers from Mister Brad before he left and it's like some of these subdivisions were taken over and within three to four months of these subdivisions that we take over, we dropping sixty to seventy, eighty thousand dollars into. Either for asphalt sealing or crack sealing or tearing out around the, 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 the bad inverted crowns that we, we have done over the years and. They, those are the costs that we need to get out of, you know, I, I don't have a problem if, if these roads are built to spec and, you know, if they are built to spec, but. Without doing any of the testing, we don't, we don't know if they are. I mean, cause we just don't know, so I'd just like to, let's revisit this maybe in a couple, maybe in the next morning meeting and. See what we can do to get some of these ironed out to try to be able to make sure these roads are built what, to what they need to be.
Yes, sir. I agree with you and you're describing quality control and quality assurance program. So yes, sir, absolutely. We'll work on that.
And I, I would point out too, Mister Newkirk and other commissioners that the uh. The ordinance requires the roads to be built to the same specs, whether they're private or public, so. A developer can say, well, I wanna have a private road and under the current ordinance, of course, it would have to be gated. Well, they've still gotta build it to the same specs that they would build it to if, uh, if they were gonna build it and turn it over to the county, so. I think you're right. I mean, a part of it, we gotta make sure that those specs are being followed and I, I don't, and we also need to make sure the specs are. What they need to be, and I know, I think Brad was instrumental in reviewing those, um, I don't know if there's room for improvement there either, but uh, yeah. So related to this road. Is it built to spec?
Information I have from a previous county engineer, yes, sir, that's correct. They've been duly examined.
Go ahead, Mister Tate.
If I may, a motion at this time.
Do I hear a second?
Motion to approve.
Is that Broadmore?
We're, we're still on uh. No, we're on number three. This is Broadmore.
Broadmore, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one more, one more, one road in there.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five to one. Moving on to number four. Approved resolution authorizing acceptance of roads in Grimble Point subdivision.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five to one. Moving on to number five, approved payment to JCT Enterprise and Company LLC for mulch grinding services in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars.
Good morning, Robert Seaman, Assistant Director of Public Works. What we have before you today is a. Uh invoice here, JCT Enterprises, forty-one thousand dollars for the reduction of grinding uh for the. Uh storm debris material that the county forces and city estates for forces that were helping us. Collected during the storm. This uh, these items were kept separate out at Mill Creek for our storage yard area. And during the process of dealing with FEMA regulations and EPD. It was determined very, very early on that. SDR, our contractor, had control of the bulk of the debris. However, because we did this in-house, we had some say-so in nine thousand cubic yards. Not the five hundred thousand cubic yards. In doing so. When our area, when our uh. Debris was being cleaned up and mulched. Okay, reduced down. We went to the contractor and said. Can we use this product, this end product? Okay, Timmy, excuse me, Commissioner Rushing, you've seen it before, the single grinding. Not really using. You have to take it down a second reduction. With that. We proposed to see what the cost savings would be if we could use this material in-house. Uh for possibly using around tree beds or flower beds. With that, contacted Parks and Recreation and they said, sure, if you can get it down to a reasonable size. We can use it in-house. With that, I went back to the grinding company again and said, okay, what will it take to do this? Right now, nine thousand cubic yards is going to cost a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. To reduce down, haul to a landfill and put it in the landfill itself. When we reevaluated this, got with our contractor. He said, I can bring that down to forty-one thousand dollars. We in turn ended up with a one, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar savings. By doing this, okay? Keep in mind, this is stuff that came from our collection centers, using our workforce and the donated force from the city of Statesboro. So we had some say-so in this. It follows FEMA guidelines. And it is EPD approved to be able to use this product at a final rest of county-owned property. Okay? This material has to be staged appropriately out at the Mill Creek site. We have to keep a fire break cut around it as long as we have material there. But it is accessible by Parks and Recreation. To uh help maintain, whether it be in roundabouts, whether it be around the oak trees out at Mill Creek Park. Or any of the other county facilities, they have access to use this, okay? This is a reduction process. With that. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I just wanna clarify that uh, the reason that we can do this with this stuff is because it was not. Collected or ground by a FEMA contractor, is that correct?
It is a FEMA contractor. The reason that we can do it is uh through this uh direction here is because we, our workforce collected it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this issue? Seven. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Gotta get my glasses out, Rissel. Item number ten, approved task release number one from Hoff Stedler and Associates under the master agreement for engineering services. Previously executed on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to perform an analysis and prepare a feasibility report. Regarding various options for septic and sewage in Bullock County. And to approve a lump sum budget of eighteen thousand as outlined in the task release. Number one exhibit attached referencing section five point one.
Mister Chairman, I goofed up. I, I didn't mean to move number ten. It was only number eleven I had an issue with.
The toothpaste is out of the tube.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm James Pope, Planning and Development Director. Uh, this task release number one. Uh is a result of a meeting that we had April twenty-fourth. Uh which the topic of uh septic tanks and, and septicage that Mister Hamilton brought forth at a, at a meeting um. Back on Ap- April fifteenth. Uh, we had a small group discussion about potential solutions to the problem. And uh, you know, it sounds like today it's getting worse, but uh, we really identified. Three potential options that, that the county could go in. Potentially others, but uh Hoff Stedler and Associates, the principal of the in, uh firm. Was in our meeting there on April twenty-fourth. And that's where, you know, relying on their expertise, we really wanted to. Use them to provide us with a feasibility report that could, you know. I can just uh. Provide you some, some rough estimates, but I'm not an engineer, so having their expertise and looking at the issue and the cost of things. In today's terms and, and down the road, I think would be beneficial and so that. This task release would allow them to go ahead and get started in doing that. Uh, I'll be the one responsible to, to meet with them and meet with the small group that. You know, as a, kind of a steering committee of sorts, but um. In, in addition, the uh. The study would look at. What we believe we have in reserve or not reserve, but EPA funding of four million dollars that could be used towards. Uh sewer funding or sewer infrastructure. And so with that, with those funds, having a timeline over the next couple of years that you're gonna have to do something with them or you lose them. Uh, this is, this goes right in, in hand with what, what we need for that study as well or for that. Uh, for those funds as well, so again, uh, staff recommends that we approve. Approve this task release number one and I'd be happy to get started as soon as, as soon as you all do, so if y'all have any questions for me, I'd be more happy to answer.
Questions or comments? All in favor? All opposed? Let's try this again. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to number eleven, approved task release number two from Hoff Stedler and Associates under the master agreement for engineering services. Previously executed on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to perform an overall cursory civil engineering plan to propose developments. Within Bullock County and to approve a not-to-exceed budget of twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mister Chairman. So uh, this is a, an effort to basically backfield uh. Prior county engineer Mister Brad Deal's departure and want to uh make sure we're still delivering the services that we need to with our uh, with our friends over in planning and zoning. So in an effort to sup- uh supplement the request uh from planning and zoning department and the civil engineering plan reviews. I coordinated with uh Hoff Stedler and Associates to develop a task release, which this is task release number two with their current uh in-play master services agreement. And this will uh actually help us to do individual plan reviews. Seven hundred and fifty dollars per plan review is the agreed-upon price. I'm requesting thirty-six of those for a total budget of twenty-seven thousand dollars over the next twelve months, and that's just an estimate that myself and. Uh talked with James Pope and planning zone to kinda come up with that, so that's the reason for this request. I'd appreciate your support.
Um, and this was, I just wanna clarify, this is mostly for the fact that we're down to just one engineer right now.
That's correct. We're, we're down in staff, obviously, so at least minus one at this point.
Okay. And do we, you might not even know, do we have any applicants or anything for the engineering job right now for a possible replacement?
I think we've had some interest, but I don't believe the interest is gonna be um qualified.
Okay, appreciate it.
Joel, and you have anything to add to that? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mister Pope.
And I would like to add that uh injured. Proposed fee schedule for this upcoming budget, we did add in a line item for plan reviews specific to the engineering review, which had not been done before, so. And, and that would cover this fee that Ron's proposing.
So that means that this fee will basically be bu- budget neutral going forward. Okay. Any questions or comments on this issue? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Y'all made me bounce around so much, I lost my place. All right, I think that takes care of all our business for today and leads us to our commission and staff comments. Are there any comments from the staff?
Brian Hendrick, EMS Director. Wanted to remind all of you that this week is National EMS Week. They do like a motto for every, every year and uh, this year's motto is we care for everyone, except for, it's not, it doesn't say it like that. It's we care, period, for everyone, period. We have to treat everybody. You know, and treat them all. I try to tell my folks to treat them like treating their mamas, so, and also uh. Yeah, thank you, Dale. Um, June the fifth, we're hosting a blood drive at EMS um from nine to two. So the QR code at the bottom of that. If you uh take a picture of it and scan the QR code, you, it shows you how to sign up for it, so. Um, if you see my folks out and about, just tell them thank you and. They keep doing a good job for us, so.
Uh, as many of you know, we had the touch truck event yesterday uh at the Ag Arena, uh and it was very successful. Just wanted to thank everybody's for their participation and uh just remind everybody that this is uh Public Works Appreciation Week, so thank y'all.
I just wanna say real quick, um, I know I promised you all a line item budget today. I did not bring anything, but I do plan to email you a link. And have it posted to our website today, which is a line, a tentative line item budget for all funds except for SPOSS at this moment. Um, which is why I recommend that you use the link rather than me just send a PDF, because that link, those numbers will update as anything changes, it will be updated. So as I get the capital, the SPOSS and TSPSS funds ready, I will just add it, so it should be there within a few days. Um, so I just wanted to let everybody know that it's coming.
And that link's gonna be shared online for the public to see as well, correct?
Yes, I will make sure that Dow shares it on social media once we get it posted.
Thank you. Any other comments from the staff?
I'm sure Mister Dow took some great pictures, so if he could send them to ACCG Lance, uh, I think Bullock County does a great job and other counties post the truck event, so. Like for us to have the opportunity to share our event.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Go ahead.
I just wanna mention something real quick. Um, so we know Country Club Road has been closed uh as of last week after the storm, so we are taking that matter very seriously and we, I've actually met with uh Kelly Horn. So we are, we moved through a scoping meeting last week and we're developing a, a task order, an individual project order with them. And that one should be advancing towards uh sometime in the June gathering to get approval on that, so we're, we're taking that very seriously and also like to announce that uh. Neville's Denmark is fully under construction. Reeves Construction is pursuing that vigorously and we hope to have that uh actually completed and. Open to traffic uh right, right around or right after Labor Day this year. But there again, they're pursuing it very vigorously to get it done as soon as possible. Thank you.
And I would like to say also on that uh Country Club Road, uh if you have any doubts or concerns uh and have not been out there physically. I urge you to do so because the pictures uh tell a good story, but go stand on the white line of that road and see how far. You have to get off the road before you're upside down in possibly water, uh and, and you'll understand why that decision was made. Mr. Davis?
I'd like to remind the public to watch out for tractors on the road. They are very wide, and they don't run eighty miles an hour as some of you like to run.
I would like to say I had the opportunity to visit the Register Fire and EMS Station. Um, if any of you commissioners have a chance to drop by there, it's real nice and cozy over there. Um, we did a, I think we did a real good job over there, and those guys are really ready to go to work. And it's a real nice um thing we did for Bullock County.
Mr. Chairman, I would like, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but what Mr. Keith Hamilton said earlier, oh, matter and portal now is shut down. So if you have a septic tank at your house, subdivision or not, oh, if you have to have it pumped now, you could be looking for a substantial increase. I don't know, I'm not going to get in his business, but I know what it cost you. I know what he charged me. But he might have had a good heart because one of them was fatally ill and the other one was fixing to have a child. But a normal case, you gonna get another tax bill from the septic tank pump, is what you gonna get. So with that being said, we need to move forward on somewhere to put this stuff as quick as we can.
So do I hear a motion to flush gently?
Yeah, yeah, that would be smart.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Uh, before we close up, I got a couple of things that I want to just bring to everyone's attention. Um, first, like uh Mr. Hendricks said, this is National EMS Week, um, eighteen to twenty-four May. And uh, like you said, their motto is we care for everyone. Um, and I don't want to turn this into politics, and I'm not trying to endorse a tax increase or talk against it. But I want to remind folks that over half of our budget goes to fund public safety and public works in this community. These gentlemen and ladies that work for EMS, when those tones drop, they don't get a choice about which calls they get to respond to. This is not an amenity that we provide. It's not a luxury. It is a requirement. Okay? They do some amazing work, and I get the privilege to work alongside them on a regular basis. And I can tell you that when you compare the EMS services that we provide in Bullock County relative to some of these surrounding communities, we are exponentially ahead of what is going on in this part of the state. So if you see these folks out, please tell them thank you. And if you see them coming down the road and they've got those flashing lights on, please pull over and allow them to get to where they're going so that they can take care of somebody that is ill or dying. Along those same lines, I just want to take a minute and talk about, uh, we talked about two roads today and issues with those roads and adopting those roads. Um, over the last month, I have talked to two developers from out of town that want to come to Bullock County and start building houses. Bullock County is on the map. Okay? I will also tell you that this week I got an invitation to go to the White House the first week in June to discuss issues in Bullock County. People are noticing what is going on here. People want to come here. They want to live here. So with that, you're going to have outside developers that are going to come here and want to build houses for other folks to come. We're not talking about your neighbors and developers from in-town building houses. They are going to look at a building code and say, that's all we got to do. We'll do that. That being said, I've talked about this before with some of the staff, but I'm going to say it openly in this meeting and go on the record for this. We need a unified building code in this county. We need to standardize it so that that building code protects the end user, whether it be the homeowner or the county when it takes over these roads and utilities. If we don't do that, we're going to have greater issues in this county, and the issues we're facing now will only grow exponentially. I can tell you, it breaks my heart to have to sit in meetings with local neighborhood homeowners, like what we've done with Pulaski Point, and tell them there's really nothing that the county can do to help you at this point. They bring in paperwork and they'll show you. But I have a covenant that says the county will take over these roads in twenty years. That covenant, though, is an agreement between that buyer and the builder, and the county gets no input in there. But there is an assumption that the county will take over those roads. And when they look at us, they are fit with rage because their roads are deteriorating and they are not built to a standard to hold up over time. We've got to address these issues. We can do it now, or we can kick the can down the road after it's a problem and react. But these folks that are coming, they're not going to care about who buys that house. They're going to throw it up quick as they can, and they're going to move on to the next one, like the locusts did in Egypt. So we need to do something now. That's all I got to say about that. Um, this, this commission has a lot of big choices to make in the next couple of months, in the next few weeks. They're not easy choices. Nobody up here enjoys the idea of considering increasing local property taxes. When we do those things, we are trying our darndest to figure out ways to minimize the impacts here. But we have an obligation. Ma'am, impact fees are coming. We're working on that. And I can tell you, one of the line items that is in the budget for this coming year is to pay for the funding study that we are mandated by state law to do before we can implement impact fees. We can't just wave our hand and say, today we will charge an impact fee, and this is how much it is. We have to do a study and provide information to the state, and they have an input in what we set for an impact fee. So we're working on that, but it does not happen overnight. And honestly, quite honestly, if we started that impact buddy, impact fee study on the first of July, you're probably looking at, it would be after the first of the year before we had something tangible that we could show for this is what we need to charge for an impact fee. So we're working on those things. We're working toward those things. But none of this stuff is going to get fixed overnight. The one thing that I will ask, I know people are frustrated. I know people are tired of paying taxes. I'm happy to sit down and talk to anybody about this stuff, and I'll tell you everything I know. I'll draw pictures on a napkin. I'll show you the slides that I have, whatever I can do to help people understand. But when you start yelling and calling people names, the natural human response is to do what? I'm human like everybody else. I don't want to be ugly with anybody. You know, and I've stood in the back of that room and showed my rear end before too. So I understand it. It ain't doing nobody any good. I said it last, this last week, when we met for our budget meeting, I'll say it again. The thing that's going to fix this is rational discussions about what's going on. Name-calling, pitchforks and torches, whatever, it ain't going to work. It ain't going to do no good. We've got to work through this together and figure out solutions to our problems. The only way we're going to do it is to sit down and have rational conversations. That's all I got. Um, I believe we are going to go into executive session. But before we do that, I'm going to request uh, somebody call a motion that we take a fifteen-minute recess so that we can uh take care of issues, people, five minutes. That'll give me long enough to correct my blood pressure medication issues. Do I hear a second? All in favor? Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if we can clarify for the record, that as we, when we go into executive session, we will not be coming back into open session.
Yeah, let me read this statement before we go ahead and go on this, this uh five-minute recess, and then we'll just come back in and adjourn in executive session. So I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three B one B and OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three B two, and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney Jeff Atkins for the purpose of discussing real estate and personal matters. When we take this motion, I'm going to actually add to it that we have, take a five-minute recess before we go into executive session. Do I have a motion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. There will be no further action taken after this executive session. And we'll reconvene at eleven oh five.